The best guess, but those numbers are determined either by an actuary, or there's things like the appreciable lives of fixed assets where those things can change over time. So what we've used is the best judgment of management. So if things do change that are subject to estimate, we don't have to go back and restate. We just handle them in the current year and move on. So just wanted to point that out in case anybody reads it has any questions. The rest of this letter just states that we didn't have any disagreements with management. Management provided us with a signed representation letter. And then that there were no other findings or issues to note that we haven't already discussed. We do have some information in here just on the end, the fund balances of the district. I've already went over that in some pretty good detail. But if you do look on the last page of this, it states when we benchmark, we always use unassigned fund balance. And so it does state to me that unassigned fund balance is below our suggested range. We disclose fifteen to twenty, I use fifteen to twenty-five percent a lot as a benchmark. But again, you have to look at your unassigned or your assigned fund balance, the working capital in this regard. So nothing to be concerned with. I would consider, you know, working with Becky and looking at that assigned next year to see if you can just move that to unassigned. You'll be a lot more aligned with other districts, you know, in the area and throughout Wisconsin, just from a benchmarking standpoint. So.
No, it was my understanding that the state has some auditing in addition to this. And I know what is happening is they've had a turnover in their auditors. And so their parts will leave us out. And our CISO will be, will be working for some of the auditing in some of the schools, but they will not be doing ours.
Yep, so they don't, DPI does not do any financial statement audits. Every district is required to have an independent accountant doing their auditing. What they look at more so is a lot of the grant filings and then the internal reporting with the wise data now. So all the information gets put over there and then they certify and review it. So for your calculations and things like that. But you'll continue to have an external audit as with every district in the state of Wisconsin. So, yep.
In this area, we're lucky. We have a non-fund membership.
Yep.
That's okay, we haven't had one for four or five years, so it was common.
Yeah. We'll work with you and get that scheduled. So we handle a lot of those for the most part remotely. We try to get everything uploaded and then do the work. And then if we need to come out to review something, go over something, schedule it, we have to come out. But we try to handle those from anywhere as much as possible, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
So question regarding the internal controls. What are your suggestion with your auditor board to, what information do you think we should be reviewing monthly? And looking at to ensure a full, full understanding of this?
Yeah, the big, the big thing will be the receipt to the disbursements. Oftentimes, you know, you're presented with that information. And I can't tell you how many times I've seen people walk in the room and sign off on it without, you know, really looking at it. I like to see some sort of budget to actual information too, on a monthly basis at least. Some of the smaller districts where there's only one person in the business office, they do review payroll too, payroll registers. Mainly to review pay rates and then look for ghost employees. We see that a lot more like when we're working with the small towns and villages than anything where they've got a lot of part-time people, you know. So very limited people who might work at the recycling center or something like that. At a school district, I wouldn't be too concerned with it because most people have a contract that you guys approve, you know, at some point throughout the year. And outside of the receipts, disbursements, a bunch to actual.
Credit card statements?
Yeah, well, credit card statements will probably be included into the disbursement listing, I would think. But they have that available, so you can review that. That, credit cards are always a very risky aspect in the audit, just because a fraud is going to come, going to happen. They can be concealed very easily, the credit cards. So it's very important if you are reviewing credit card statements to make sure that they're supporting documentation. So if there's a charge, there should be some sort of acknowledgement of that disbursement or else the physical receipt. We're all humans, we all do these things. So it's not uncommon to have some missing receipts, but then there's some sort of statement of acknowledgement, like this for business purpose. So, yep. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Calling about it?
Yeah. I've been doing governmental audits for almost 12 years. I started my career up in Minneapolis, St. Paul area. So I worked on school districts there. But I've been doing Wisconsin schools for seven years now, so.
Okay.
And worked with a variety of them. I worked with a lot of districts down in the Milwaukee area and then all the way up to northern Wisconsin. So we audit forty-nine districts, like Kerber Rose. So the three of us get a lot of experience.
What about this, are you on it?
I primarily record a bachelor.
Okay. The company's called?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, we're up to, I think, two hundred and thirty employees right now, so.
How many offices do you own?
Thirteen offices.
I just want to say thank you for that.
Yeah.
The last minute sign on of ours.
Oh, no, it was a pleasure, a pleasure working with you. You know, like I said, everything's clean. We had a couple of small, I would call it, reclasses, adjustments, you know, just for me. Coded things to the credit accounts for.
To front pay a little bit differently than our previous audit.
Yeah, and with our experience, we see how different districts do things. So we get a little bit more experience with that. So we try to always make any recommendations that we can do to the districts to help themselves.
And Kerber Rose, David, they also did the charter school audit that were required to do not through the grant.
Yep.
And that all.
Yeah, that one, well, so we, we audit, I think we had five or six charter schools. We were, five or six districts that have charter schools that have got the implementation grant. And our understanding was that these audits were being done all across the board. DPI was accepting them, but we actually worked with DPI and a couple of other firms to come up with a standard approach on that this year. So if you see those financial statements, you're going to see that they look a little bit differently in the past. Your prior auditor did a full, flush, nonprofit audit where he was taking all of the fundraising revenues and the grants that they received and doing an audit of that. That wasn't the requirement that was meant by DPI. So we were able to do it under a regular basis, like, I mean, we're truly auditing those expenses that are covered by that grant. So we're able to do it at a substantially less fee, you know, and then keep the money within the charter schools. So if you do see that, it's going to look differently this year, but that's what we worked with DPI to do and it just made sense. We talked to.
It was much easier.
Yeah, yeah.
What Jeff told us last year.
Yeah, well, we learned a lot.
Well, that's true, we learned a lot.
Yeah, DPI had those requirements and then it's passed out from the federal government, obviously. But they didn't really provide much clarity on that. So once we took over a couple of these new jobs, we really saw this variance and were able to equip other CP firms to, from zero to last year.
And this was, I think, like you said, what it was meant to be.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
There's no reason for the charter school to have additional resources in a school district on something that they're not required to have. If they did have that charter school grant, they wouldn't need an audit because they don't need the criteria in fundraising and grant dollars to, you know.
Technically, all their expenses are already being audited to us.
A lot of, yeah.
Except for their five oh one C three, exactly.
Yep, yep, so we'll, we'll keep having a dialogue every year and make sure that they stay in compliance. We've had some discussions on their five oh one C three status to make sure that, you know, those eyes get done and say, get that reinstated. So, but they're not working with us on that. They were working with somebody else. So, yep. Great, well, thank you, have a good night, guys.
Thank you, thank you, drive safe.
Yeah, thanks. It's like something. Is there anything in there that you want to?
I'll talk to you soon.
All right, sounds good.
I'll have a membership audit. Okay.
I mean, I can just ask them what she's doing. I don't have a lot, I don't have much either, just more information.
We want to run a few minutes here, but we'll have to do that.
Hey, Robert, a quick, a quick question for you. Sorry. The key box, the program fifty and all, are you still funding it?
We need to work.
Okay. Obviously, it's quite. But you can say that you're still.
We have conversations that are, I was confident.
Okay. Especially how often do we come up with?
Certainly annually.
Obviously, quarterly or something.
Want to exactly use that?
That's what I keep trying to.
Okay. It is okay. It's that people lost their families who take that cost.
You're questioning.
But because we're a legacy school, it's a, one of three thousand. That might change after.
I had a question on. Four projectors in the, in the mouse, the mouse that I put up on that sits on page thirty-seven.
Okay.
Are those replacements or are those additional ones?
Replacements.
Good point.
Yeah, a lot of the smart boards, those lot, like, you know, when I first started.
Oh, the first, that's the one?
Are starting to fail.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other question I had had to do with cameras on page forty-one, the Santa IP cameras, are those additional or are those additional?
I want to say that that's part of the project from the program.
Okay. I knew that, that was.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, yeah. But you guys had a clue. Just kind of feeling, it's the normal.
That was all I had. Do you like, do you like, have forty two different clients that they're managing personally?
Yeah.
Yep, we have the ADA compliance, compliance, and that's the special ed board with the, the, for that program.
Credit card, I think you asked about it. Two thousand dollars, not bad, but it's a big return, and that's over twenty-four dollars. Because I don't kind of, I think there was some purchases in the front of that.
Yeah, that's probably, with the credit card, you have to put it all in. So that's the fourth chance. And then also the credit card, this one, or on the next one. I know they had to reach for some of the things, I remember that.
Okay.
Um.
I'll check each other.
Oh, yeah.
It's a big number for, what was listed, I guess. Page forty-seven.
Yeah, the credit cards are expensive and, yeah. I look at all, I'm going to choose one.
So that's really, that's a credit? It's not just, you know, a credit. It's just like. So it's currently, both of these are included in that number or do they have a whole thing?
Okay.
Yeah, I, that's just it.
Sometimes it turns out to be.
Yeah, the credits will be probably on the next one. I don't think they were this small.
Yeah, they're not.
And you don't love it.
Yes, yes, that's, I think I put a sheet in there.
That's in the regular.
Uh huh. And we just got, our February, our payments all just came in for the two of seven. Which, the February payments get charged for the thirty-nine of K R. Um, yeah, that's those funds.
Anything else?
Nope. Do you want to adjourn the final?
I'm going to adjourn with you. Because I have things.
After the talent.
Yep.
What's that? Yeah, I second. Ask someone to hold her favor.
On to it for the board meeting. It's called, they'll pick up a little better volume.
Yep, can you, can, Kelly, can you hear us?
Kelly, can you hear us?
Can you hear us, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'd like to adjourn, or after the adjournment of the previous meeting, we'd like to convene the regular meeting. So please stand and join me in pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And according to public participation policy, zero one six seven point three, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on any of the agenda items tonight, prior to the meeting? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on with the informational items. First informational item is future board meeting dates, Monday, March fourteenth, April twenty-fifth, and May sixteenth. Those are the regular scheduled times for those meetings.
Mark?
Yep.
There was a hand here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't see an agenda item, but I'd just like to speak, is that okay?
Can you, can you state what that's on, or?
I just want to introduce myself as a candidate for the board.
Yep, go for it. It's not going to exceed three minutes, is it?
No, definitely not.
Okay.
Dear Tomorrow River School Board and community members in attendance, my name is Haley Bryan, and I am running for a position on this school board. As an educator, I'm very passionate about education. As a community member, I have so much pride for our community. And as a parent, I want my children and yours to create the best futures for themselves. If elected, I would use my educational knowledge to promote improved academics through innovative teaching practices, technology use, and curriculum alignment. I have served in many leadership roles in the buildings I have worked in to help support these goals and strive to continually grow myself as an educator. If elected, I would do my best to support our educators with the resources needed to offer the best learning opportunities and engaging classroom environments. The Falcon Steam referendum passing would contribute to this vision by improving and maintaining our schools. If elected, I hope to unify and build relationships among parents, students, district staff, and other community members to ensure a positive school culture that matches our thriving community that I'm so proud to be a part of. I bring a unique perspective in my roles as parent, educator, and community member to back this mission. I promise to listen to all sides and keep the students at the heart of decisions. As an educator, I'm very passionate about education. I know that if given the opportunity, I can make a big difference for the Tomorrow River School District. I want to thank the other candidates for committing themselves to the school's future. Thank you to the present board members for your hard work, dedication, and commitment serving on this board. Thank you all for your time, Haley Bryan.
Anybody else like to speak out there?
I know we have two, we have.
We have two other candidates president, that's why you're welcome to.
Yeah.
Okay.
You too.
I'm fine.
All right, okay.
Okay. I had some, I sent out some feelers to, to staff prior to putting this on the agenda. Because we had talked about methods that we could use to improve staff morale. And, and we used to have regular listening sessions with our staff. And Diana remembers this, and I remember doing this, and we haven't had those for a while. So that's why on the agenda, it says, set date, time, and location for a special board staff open discussion meeting. The feedback I got from staff members was the ideal time would be preferably on a Wednesday before four o'clock, like between three-thirty and four o'clock. Because you'd have a higher attendance, you'd have more people available to come. And I'm just, want to know if you can check your calendars, if that's going to, if that's a suitable date, or if you have other suggestions. We, we still have to set the, the date itself. I'm hoping that we can do it soon.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
First, second Wednesday in March?
First Wednesday in March, Wednesday in March?
First or second?
I would actually like.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday in March because I'm on spring break, and then I can be here without having to take time off of my regular job. And I'll get that, get that information out to staff.
What is that date?
The. Set it for three-thirty PM.
Sure.
That work for you, Kelly?
What time?
March ninth, Wednesday, three-thirty PM.
I have a candidate to cover meeting, but I, it hasn't been firmly set, so maybe I can get out of it.
Well, either that or you can check your calendar, or we could always move it up to the Wednesday prior to that, too. We have two possible dates, tentatively second Wednesday, March ninth. And then a backup date would be the Wednesday prior to that on the second.
Three to March second.
Yep. Okay. Unofficial results for the school board primary election on February fifteenth are on page three in your packet.
And just to note, we did canvass today and no changes. So the unofficial are actually official, same, same totals.
Are we going to report on those, or are we just leaving, leave that as a stance? They're, they're actually available on the district website.
Yes.
And access.
I can't hear Mark at all, so I think at one twenty, he said something, but.
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
Five point three, and I haven't heard a word that Mark has said.
Can you hear me talking at all right now? Because the kid, the speaker's in the other office. And it's being picked up by the camera, I believe. How about now, can you hear that?
Do you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're the only one that can hear, but I think it's because Mark is muted on Zoom and you're not.
So, so Kelly, what's going to, what's going to?
Let me get feedback.
What's going to happen, Kelly, is Mark is almost done here. The screen, so you need to hear me and, and Bill Van Lanning when he speaks. And then once we're done, we're going to plug into Mark's computer and I'm going to log off of Zoom.
And I'm going to lean in on your computer.
Okay, so can someone just tell me what we decided for five point two?
Yes, I can do that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so five point two, we have a tentative date for March ninth at three-thirty PM here in the school. And then you can check your calendars, and the backup date would be March second. They're both on Wednesdays, they're at three-thirty PM. And I'll get that message out to staff, they're probably watching this, and I'll, I'll.
Is that backup date on March tenth?
March second, the week prior to.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, then, and the, the other thing I said up to that was unofficial results were in the packet on page three, which you have a copy of. Five point four, elementary writing program, being a writer, that's on page four and five of your packet. Is there anybody to report on that here, present? Okay, you have the floor.
All right. I felt like I should be introducing you. Well, I'm Roberta Snyder, I'm the reading specialist here at Tomorrow River School District. And I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the program that was purchased for elementary two years ago called Being a Writer. So after evaluating our test scores and deep discussion with our reading committee and talking about our strategic plan for the district, teachers voiced that they wanted a more systematic approach to teaching writing in the elementary. And being a writer has done that. So the brochure that I gave to everybody was supposed to be folded, so you might be like, wow, why did she write it this way? But if you fold it in brochure manner, you'll see all of the different highlights that the students were able to show and the teachers talked about how they liked the program and things like that. So take the time to look over that, otherwise, I'm just, I just wanted to dig a little bit deeper and show you kind of firsthand what each grade band is doing. So for K one this year, we introduced something called sound wells. And those sound wells are for, they focus on letter sounds, and then they connect those sounds with letters. Then those students are able to put those sounds and letters together to build words and then stories. So I just have to show you this kindergartner, and this was like in September, and it's a shark, and so he did the beginning sound, shh. And then this was January ten. So, really good stuff. It, it's pretty amazing. So I wanted to share that with you guys. So with being a writer in the K one era, area, they talk about ideas and they use the SEL framework to embed it in their curriculum. And then for the two through four, they talk, talk more about the writing process. And so they begin to collaborate with one another and talk about their writing and how it can be proofread and revised, and then they publish pieces. So then we then use that for our standardized report cards on how the student has wrote as a writer. So it's been a really great product, and it has, the teachers have just been amazing with it. They've put their two cents in it, they've created this really amazing experience for our writers, so we're really excited about it. So I wanted to make sure to share that with you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next report is on Talon News, online news. Are you going to do it, Van Lanning?
Bill's going to do it, let's go make comments. So one of the things that we wanted to start doing at our monthly board meetings is recognizing student success, and we actually had two tonight, so that's, that's cool. But it's time that we start, we, we're doing so many good things with our staff in, in all levels, elementary, middle school, high school, charter school. So every month, at the beginning of the board meeting, we're going to bring you some type of program or a success story, something related to instruction, what, what our students and staff are doing. So it'll take, you know, maybe five minutes or so, but I think it's really important that we do that, so we get the message out to what, what we're doing. And Bill, do you want to just sit here, so Kelly, she won't hear.
Hi.
Hello.
Well, the talent, so when I got here, I, I've been here now a few months. I thought the, I've always wanted, I've always, where I've been, I've always wanted to promote journalism and writing and publishing. So I decided, you know, I felt like there was a need for a nice online website that we could create student work and publish student work. So we have the, so essentially, we've been able to create the students, and some of my students are acting as designers. They created an entire, we've created this website, which, which we hope to publish like thirty, forty stories a, a month. And I believe based on my classes in English comp, that with mid-state as well as my media classes, I'll be able to do that. And basically, you know, writing in what you would expect in a student publication, a lot of sports, feature writing. But really good stories in general about kids in the school, in the classroom community. So I look at our audiences, the kids in the school, the parents, the general community, and I feel like it's a great, besides a, like a public relations vehicle, it's just great to get the kids published. And if they publish their work, a lot of scholarships I see will ask for three or four samples, and they would have, you know, they already have samples that they've produced, that they can create in their portfolio. And I just see it as a good opportunity for scholarships, developing, developing a writing culture. And so I'm hoping to just, you know, we started it, Mary Dudley's been great in helping me out and promoting it. And we're hoping to produce every month, like a monthly edition. And then working with Brent over at the center, he's really enthused about it, and he shares some stories with me back and forth. And so if he sees things he likes there, he's going to publish it there, so the kids will have other opportunities. So I just think it's a great vehicle to promote, you know, sort of a general writing culture, but also kind of fun, and it's great for classroom management, too. You know, have a place to put their work as opposed to just, you know, piling it away somewhere. So I think it's going to be a great little vehicle, and I'm happy to promote it, and Mr. Ritchie had pointed it out, so I appreciate your time to promote the school and the.
Excuse me, is there any possibility of getting a hard copy of this? I had the opportunity of talking with one of our elderly former teachers. She does not have internet, she doesn't have a very sophisticated phone, in fact, she didn't even have a computer. And she was very concerned because she doesn't know what's going on here.
Oh, she would like a hard copy, well, I think that probably could be managed. You know, I'll discuss that with Mary. I would think you could easily print a few, if you really, for people who had certain needs, that would be great.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to skip to item five point six point three, Greg Gudchow, director of marketing, is going to give his report.
Thank you, Mark. So I'm going to start off with referendum promotional.
showing up in their mailbox end of this week or into next. We've printed 500 of the tri-fold flyers that Hoffman created. Those are currently positioned at most of the major entries here at the school. We have them right now down in front by the concessions at the basketball game and available to people to pick up, and we're starting to distribute those around town. We have some at OK Hardware and we'll be distributing them elsewhere for people to pick up. Were corrections made? Have flyer? All edits were incorporated. We have display boards also located at the main entries here at the school, five large boards showing the renderings of Falcon Steam and the new secure entry areas. So those are located adjacent to all of the flyers for people to take with them. Social media, we've been running since January 27th, twice a week on the district Facebook page, yeah, two posts per week on Facebook, again, highlighting some of the most important pertinent points from the mailer, from the flyer, calling those things out and then pointing people to the website where there's more in-depth information for them to click on and read. So eight on the, eight on the school district website, we've done one on the Falcon Pride Project Facebook page, just to help get the news out there. So those nine items live today on Falcon Steam Facebook page. We've driven between those posts on social and on, if you go to the school district website right now, there's a link, so if you land on the homepage, it drives you, you know, for information on the referendum, go to Amber's Falcon Steam. So we're linking people directly over from the school site as well. Sure, if you'd like to. So right there, you can see, very obvious and easy for people to find information on referendum. If they don't want that, they simply X out of it and go to the rest of the page. To date, we've driven, we have about 550 people who have checked on the Falcon Steam referendum page, so that's working. Community spirit, Mike's articles have been running monthly the last couple of months. Brent has, he has all of the renderings available to him. We're hoping for a pretty large package here in this, would that be the March issue that will be coming out soon? And e-newsletter is sort of the last prong of the promotional plan. The February issue just released to 320 email addresses that we now have for the Falcon's Nest, and the lead piece there was also referendum-related. Going into the Falcon's Nest, the e-newsletter, again, up to 320 emails right now, I won't bore you with all the statistics on that, actually, it's grown to 342 email addresses that we have, so that's growing nicely. I'm hoping that we still get to 1,000 subscribers on the e-newsletter by the end of the year. And you can see in the report here to the board, some of the things that have been covered in the Falcon's Nest. We try to cover a broad variety of content, we feature alumni, we feature students, we do athletics, we cover the band, choir, we've promoted the upcoming musical, so really every element that we, that we find important. We did a profile on our first-year boys' basketball coach, a real nice sit-down Q&amp;A with him, so the FBLA piece was there, et cetera. Falcon 50 raffle, we have two tickets remaining, so just about the full 25,000, we got 24,000 in revenue on this right now. I'm gonna sell these last two in these next couple of days by hook or by crook, and we'll have $12,500, which will go to the Falcon Pride Project Phase 2, and somebody's going to win $10,000 on Thursday night at halftime of the boys' basketball game. Along with that, we have a big performance at halftime, the dance team has got a really cool program put together, should be a lot of fun, so we're trying to make that a cool celebration.
Is it gonna be streamed?
Excuse me?
Is it going to be streamed?
Yeah, so I've talked to Zaleski Sports, normally at halftime, they, they go into their ad package, which they have to deliver their commercials, but they know that this is coming and they're going to stay with the live stream and do the halftime, and so, yeah. So adding in the Falcon 50, $12,500, on the back page of the report, you can see that on Falcon Pride Project Phase 2, we are now net positive on that effort. Got a $450 balance or so positive on that. Approximately $202,000 in Phase 2 contributions, of which approximately $144,000 is community donated cash. So that's all available there in my report. Any questions?
Okay, you're back in the right time. We're at two administrative principal supervisor reports, and Dr. Ritchie's gonna go first.
Okay, I will just, I'll keep going with the referendum, I'll start with that. So I'm not gonna repeat what Greg said, but just a reminder that we do have some, some meetings coming up on March 8th, we're going, we're going to invite the business people in to do a presentation. We do have a planned open house for the evening of March 10th and also March 22nd, where again, Jody will be here for all these meetings, and we will, he'll do the presentation, go through the, his report, and show everyone what we're attempting to do with this referendum. Also, on March 14th, the Tomorrow River Business Association is having their monthly meeting here, so then on March 10th. You notice tonight, we did not have a referendum meeting tonight with the board, so the next scheduled meeting, I just talked to Jody today, we're going to schedule it from March 10th at 5:30 PM, so that'll be before the open house. That way, it's only one night for two meetings. So if you can make it, March 10th at 5:30 with Jody and Hoffman, then followed by 6:30 will be an open house. When I say open house, what basically what we're talking about is that invite anyone who wants to come in to hear the presentation, we'll answer any questions they might have, and then if they want to see the facility, especially the tech ed area, the science area, those rooms will be opened up and we'll take them and give them a tour of any part of the school that they would like to see. That's, that's the plan for those evenings. So, any questions on that? All right. Staff recognition, so we do our quarterly staff members of the month. So for the second quarter, elementary, a staff member was Julie Zimmerman, middle school teacher was Beth Borgan, high school teacher, Jason Pickering, charter school teacher, Emma Bartel, support staff was Kim Borgan, this special education employee of the month was Katie Alm, and then the substitute teacher of the month was Kimmy Pingel. So those are our, our staff members of the second quarter. Safe return to school plan, as required for SIR 3, we had to come up with our return to school plan. So part of the confusing part of this plan for your SIR 3 money was, it's called Safe Return to In-Person Instruction of Your Plan, and that, we didn't pick the name, that was the name that we had to have on here. So this is really referring to, I'm gonna back you up three school years ago, we were, we were shut down in March of 2020. We reopened in September of 21, if you remember right, that was the 2020, sorry, 2020, September 2020. That was when the high school went two days a week, where they had cohorts, the elementary was four days a week, K8 was four days a week, Wednesday was staff. We're doing two platforms, and Wednesday was their prep day plus teaching online. So that was our reopening plan. So when we answer these questions, we have to go back to that September and then, you know, bring that forward. So as you go through the plan, it is on the website, and so we're not gonna really go through it right now, but it's on the website if you want to see it, and everything is spelled out. I do want to show you one thing. So the other thing that we were required to do is have a public input session, or do a survey, or get some, something out to the public. And so, I'll back up. So we do have, at the end of the report, there is a survey right here, so you can click on the survey and you can take the survey. So this closes on February 28th, and you can see we've got 29 responses so far, so some, actually some pretty good ideas in here, so just be happy if you have not taken the survey, please go ahead and, and take that survey. I do want to back up and go to one more page on the report.
Can I interject for a second?
Yes.
On, on the survey, it's, it's only available online at this point?
It is.
Is there an option for somebody who needs a one's paper copy, they can come in and get the survey here?
They can certainly come in and take it here, and we could, you know, if they come in after the 28th, I can certainly open, it's one click to open it back up, we can open it back up for them. The easiest thing to do would be to have someone come in here and take the survey, because if they take a paper copy, then we're gonna have to take their paper copy and enter everything, otherwise it's not gonna show up for our results.
Just so they have a place to go.
Absolutely. So we'll, we'll have to make sure we let people know that, that they can sit, come into the district office, we'll get them set up with this laptop, and they can come in here, we'll help them, and then we'll, they'll be able to participate in the survey. On page eight of the report, we, we were not required to put SIR 1 and SIR 2 in here, but a lot of people were asking where that money was going, and so we did a summary, so you can actually see SIR 1, SIR 2, and SIR 3. So SIR 1 is spent already, there is money available in SIR 2, and we have not touched SIR 3 yet. Again, you have until 2024, September 30th of 2024 to spend the SIR 3. The SIR 2, we must spend by September 30th, 2023. And the plan all along was to try to spend SIR 1 first, followed by SIR 2, and then SIR 3. Now, SIR 2 and SIR 3 might overlap, because we are looking at some large purchases for SIR 2 as well, as well as SIR 3. We're really looking at doing some curriculum work, we've added some staff, we added a math teacher next year to the high school, we did add a custodian, and so those are the bigger ticket items, but that budget is out there, and we are getting some good ideas again from the people who are answering the survey. So, any questions from the board regarding the SIR funds?
Will the survey results be in our board packet at the next meeting?
Yes, once it closes, we can certainly put them in there. Yep.
Okay.
The last thing, I guess I want to just let everyone know is that we did draw the ballot, we did the canvassing today, and so we did, we drew for the ballot for the election, and so, remember now, Joe, let's see, Joe was first, Haley's second, Remus third, and you were fourth. And Diana was in here, and Sam was in here, and Marilyn was in here, and myself, for all of the drawing, so that's...
Pick four names out of them.
We had a paper folded, Sam actually drew it out, she couldn't see him at all, she drew him, and that was, that was the order, so just so everyone knows that. And then the other thing, my last comment, I guess, is that we did something different this year, I've done this in my previous districts and they went over well. So for the night of the primary, we put the results on the website as they came in, we had a spreadsheet, and so we are going to do that again on April 5th, not only for the board election, but for the referendum. So anyone, anywhere that would like to see how the results are coming in, they'll be able to see it pretty much live, as we get the phone call, we enter it onto the spreadsheet. So make sure you refresh your computer once it's up, that's one thing, you have to refresh it to get the updated votes. Keep in mind, we put them on there as quickly as we get them, we can control when we get that phone call. And it happened fairly quick for the primary, because there was not much going on. As you get into your April, November elections, you get your governor, your presidential, sometimes we don't get called till 10:30, so for those, it's gonna take a lot longer. And now, April, this April, there's, again, there's not a lot, but there's, there's more than what was on the primary, so we'll do it again, and people did comment they liked that, so we'll, we'll continue to do that, so. I think that is all I have.
Would it be possible to mute that so I can talk to this one?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna plug you in and shut mine off.
All right.
I should be done, so you can go ahead and hear on yours, I'm gonna give you the...
Can you hear me now, Kelly? Okay. Mike's making a little change here, but while he's doing that, we might as well have Beth Shore come up, or just start the charter school report, which you have a copy of.
I want to start off by just letting you guys know, we picked up nine new students in January, so we have finally made it over that 200 mark, we have been inching closer and closer and closer, and we're finally there. So that is a pretty substantial, major piece of excitement at its well. All right. So Ms. Emily's eighth grade class completed their performances of Olympus the first week in February. Their performances were well-attended, and the students at school are now anxiously awaiting their play blocks. Each year, each grade level completes and performs a play, and the eighth graders were definitely an inspiration to all of the younger students. One of the traditional components of ninth grade class experience is to design and develop a project. Our students have chosen a project, and each student has been working with a mentor to complete their projects. These will be showcased later in the spring, I'll let you know the dates, I think it's gonna be a pretty amazing presentation. Our joint staff governance board meeting and the annual governance board retreat will both be held in March. We are looking forward to our fundraising concert, that will be held May 21st to help us raise funds for the completion of our amphitheater. Right now, we have a performance slab, so we're looking for the top part of it to come out. It was, we started it last year with the grant funds that we received from the Oscar Neal Foundation. Open enrollment has started for us with the 22, 23 school year. We've got a lot of families applying and touring as they prepare to start their youngest ones off at TRCCS. Our annual lottery is held during the May governance board meeting, so that will be here before we know it. One of the components of our virtual school that we've been able to more fully develop this year has been our monthly field trips, where we host events around the state for our parents to attend, and our students. In January, we ice skated and decorated mugs in Oshkosh, January brought a, or February brought a trip to Discovery World in Milwaukee, and March will be at the Paper Discovery Center in Appleton. These trips give our families a chance to meet and connect with other students from their classes on an in-person adventure, and they've been very well received. I just left that on there, on the bottom, I brought that up last month, but as we've entered into our ninth year, we definitely are moving into that phase of maintenance versus the growth stage, so we're just continuing to look at all the needs that we still have and figuring out the best way to meet them, so.
Sorry?
Lots of good things.
So, I'm here? Are we just, are you gonna cover that report, or could I cover that for you?
You can cover it, I think you see at the basketball game, or see that?
fifth place currently. All-conference mentions were Leah Peterson at 106, Ryan Worzynski at 113, Ephraim Engelmeier at 160, Colton Jakubik at 182, sophomore, the first three are sophomores, and Colton is a senior. Ryan and Ephraim and Colton are honorable mention, and Leah Peterson made second team. Team regional champions... Team regional champions earned a regional championship via a tiebreaker over Adams Friendship to advance to the team sectional, in which Amherst hosted on last Tuesday night. Amherst took on Division Two Palo Canto Falls, lost 51 to 30. And the dance team had a regional competition at Hudson High School, finished 10th place in the Palm Division and 10th place in hip hop. Girls' basketball earned no worse than a share of the CWC East title with an 11-1 conference record. With their 16-6 record overall, the Falcons earned a number two seed in the upcoming WIAA playoffs. Amherst will host the winner of the Manamani Indian Tomahawk game on Friday, February 25th at 7:00 PM. Boys' basketball currently sits at an 11-11 overall, 4-7 in the CWC East Conference. Two more home regular season games before the beginning of the WIAA state playoffs. Girls' hockey, number five seeded Marshfield Co-op played at Northland Pines Co-op on Thursday, attempting to advance to the sectional semifinal in D.C. Everest to be played on Tuesday, February 22nd. And in boys' hockey, number seeded six Spacelli Co-op played at Mosany on Thursday, attempting to advance to the sectional semifinal versus Ryan Lender and Three Lakes Co-op.
And I can add that we, the wrestling section was for this weekend. We did have one wrestling that qualified for state. We can play that. And there's a basketball game going on right now against Cousteau, right?
I can go back and cover that.
I did not.
Yeah, this is in reference to FBL State, FBLA State that's coming up. Congratulations go out to Travis Zellmer and the team for their outstanding results on February 5th at the regional academic competition. Among 29 competing schools of all sizes, Amherst placed second. Of the 50-member club, 30 individuals placed in the top three of their competitive event. And those results qualify these individuals to compete at Business World, which will be held at St. Norbert's College in DePere on June 19th through 22nd. In first place for agribusiness, Jacob Kersling. First place for cybersecurity, Jen Omernick. First place for impromptu speaking, Aiden Kripka. First place introduction to business communications, Siri Anderson. First place introduction to event planning, Eden Lee, Maisy Martin, Lilly Haas. First place in network design, Gavin Blanton, Jake Hoffman, Landon Mole. Second places, business management, Ethan Zilish, Ryan Breed, Jacob Spielstra. Second, client service, Mason Colligan. Second place help desk, Ty Sheldon. Second place international business, Shelby Lutz, Bailey Maxwell. Second parliamentary procedure, Drew Bandi, Steve Bandi, or Stephanie Bandi, sorry, Talon Mays, Alexa Schafer, Hannah Wall. Second place in sports and entertainment management, Lauren Byrd, Harley Carlson, Carly Wantke. Second place in user experience design, Baylen Voitilevich. Third place introduction to business concepts, Jack Seeger. Third place introduction to business presentation, Garrison Gordon, Noah Spielstra. And third place supply chain management, Danic Alasa. Congratulations goes out to every one of those other teams, and good luck at Business World. School nursery report. I'll give you the highlights of this. We've seen a decline in COVID numbers over the last couple of weeks. Here are the new cases by week, week January 17th through 14th, including at the charter school, there was seven. Week January 24th through 11, it says charter three, oh, excuse me, 14, week January 17 at the high, at the. And seven at the charter. Week of January 24th, 11 in the district, three at the charter. Week January 31st, eight in the district, zero at the charter. Week of February 7th, two in the district, zero at the charter. And the week of February 14th, zero at both the district and the charter. PCR testing remains available at school. The turnaround time currently is 24 hours. It can vary depending on the amount of tests received by the site, time that they are picked up. The ambulance needed to be called the week of January 31st for a staff medical emergency. A new small ice machine was purchased for the health room due to the frequency of injuries requiring ice in the middle of the winter. This will provide quicker access to the ice and ice that is more appropriately sized for injuries than the current system that is in place. A new medication consent form for over-the-counter medication will be added to the healthcare tab on our website. It will allow me to administer certain over-the-counter medications, and it lists several of those, to our students without the need to call and disrupt parents each time to receive permission for these needs. Currently, there are 20 students who regularly take prescription medication down in the health room, one to two times daily. There are three diabetic students who come to the office throughout the day for sugar checks, pump corrections, and insulin dosing. During the past month, the number of kids throughout, through the office ranged daily from 20 to 60 for various reasons. This number does not include kids who receive regular medications or diabetic children. Healthy Smiles was here for their winter visit. This is an annual event. 121 students were seen. The attached flyer has additional information. I think it's still on. 121 children received care, 216 teeth, like 206 students' teeth were sealed. I'm assuming that's what that, 118 received fluoride varnish applications and $23,308 given out. Am I cutting out? In preventative dental care. So that's always a great thing to have. Any other reports from people out there? Mike, Mike Clefford.
So I passed out a couple of sheets earlier. The first one is about an artist in residence through Creve Portage County. They have a paint the county campaign. We interviewed, they did an application process, and we conducted interviews and selected our artist, which is John Quallichek. And this was the proposal. This is not exactly what's going to happen, but this is a proposal. It'll be a student-run initiative. So the artist and residents will be working with the students, and they'll come up with a design. And once they have that design, I will bring it to the board for your approval to. Also, ACT testing's that. It takes staff to proctor it. So things have to go a little bit differently throughout the school day. So our freshmen, they're going to be put into different stations, and we're coming up activities for them. The sophomores are going to take a college visit to UW Stevens Point that day. Our juniors are taking the ACT. And this year, we're going to actually take it on their Chromebooks. So something that we haven't done before, we're going to be taking it online instead of paper pencil. And then our seniors are going to have the day off that day. Also, I just want to let everyone know, if you see our, anyone in our music department, Shelley Baumann or Jolynn Wooker, just give them a pat on the back. They've been working extra hard lately. They are hosting solo ensemble in two weeks, as well as getting ready for a musical. There's a lot of stuff going on right now, which is taking a lot of their time, and they're doing an excellent job doing that. And also, our tech ed department and art department are helping with the set design and building. So there's a lot of stuff going on right now to make some great things happen at the school.
Thank you. Any other reports? Shiri Oldison.
I just wanted to let you know that we're narrowing our selections for reading curriculum. There's a K4, 5.8, and then 9.12. So that will be coming to you soon in the next couple of months on what our final selections are to also enhance the writing curriculum that we already have in place. That won't go away. So just wanted to make sure that you knew what you saw tonight isn't going away. That's, that's going to be enhanced. Also, continuing with human growth and development, I was hoping that we would have that completed in March. It looks like it'll be more like April. So once that's completed, the final draft will be brought to you for approval as well. And wanted to let you know, in case you see something that looks like this coming out on the fence by the elementary.
I can put that up here on the screen.
Our elementary student council raised enough money to be able to purchase, they're called place cups, researched it. There are some other schools around the state of Wisconsin that have those as well with different mascots. Sounds like they hold up pretty well. We will be putting that on the fence by the elementary playground. And then along with that, the words be kind. So just in case you see that and wonder where it came from, that is from the elementary student council.
Thank you. Any other reports? Then we'll move on to district enrollment. That's on page 24 and 25 in your packet. And in the tomorrow, in the, in the, in the, in the district, not the charter school, that after this enrollment count, we have 960. And in the charter school, we have 126. Total enrollment in January is 1231. Okay, now this next portion is, is for giving reports on the Wisconsin Association of School Board Convention held in Milwaukee. Are we going to continue with that? We were missing two members at this point. You want to, you want to give your reports? We can do it.
Yep.
We'll, we'll give you guys opportunity. Kelly can give one. But if Kirk wants to give one, we give an opportunity at the next meeting.
I'll just keep mine brief. I just spent some time talking with some of our vendors here. One was regarding the stalker flooring. Spent quite a bit of time with their booth, talking about those options, which I think we'll be discussing later tonight. Also attended some school law sessions and legislative updates. And bounced around between a few that I was trying to find interesting. So we're just there Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay. I was there on Wednesday for the delegate assembly, and I was there Thursday as well. I attend a session on public participation during school board meetings, just to make sure that we were doing things properly and we were adapting to the times, so to speak. It was presented by the WASB Staff Council. And just a couple of the highlights points that I took out of there, we're actually in pretty good shape the way we do it. The public may participate on actionable items, and legally, we can restrict participation to what's on the agenda. So I just want to make sure that we know it can, just can't be anything goes. But we do have the ability to allow people to break, break from that form if we choose to. The presiding officer may, is encouraged to occasionally remind speakers of policy guidelines. Those wishing to speak should register prior to the meeting. We're going to try to do that at our next meeting. Have a place where you can sign in when you arrive and state what you're going to talk about. And then I can announce those in an orderly fashion prior to the meeting. If we're going to focus on established procedure for complaints, there may be some redirects through the proper chain of command in the district. Sometimes we, a complaint might come this direction that hasn't gotten to our administrators and or gotten to the level where it could be dealt with. So we have the opportunity to do some redirects there. We're going to clearly state, we're going to clearly state prior to that there, you can't make comments by name of teachers or students when we make reference to things that might be on the agenda. Board members may speak during public comment, but only about items on the agenda, or there could be an open meeting violation. So we just want to try to stick, we're, like I said before, we're in pretty good shape the way we do it. I also attended a session on renewable energy that was presented by Focus on Energy. It was more that it was doing, doing building audits to see what your energy consumption is. The Darlington School District made a presentation there. I've got some information for Robert for, that he can talk to him, email him, and get some information for our future project, as we are talking about the possibility of including renewable energy in for that. And some interesting things that have changed since the last time you visited this, the cost payback has gotten, it's gotten sooner. It, I mean, when we, the last time I looked at it, it was between 20 years to 30 years payback. It's now getting down to between 10 and 11 years payback on an investment on that. And you don't have to punch holes in the roof to install solar panels. They can be mounted on platforms that can withstand 110 mile an hour. They can be taken off, replace a roof, and then reattached. Then I also attended the delegate assembly. And for board members, if you go to the WASB website, you can see all of the resolutions and the results and how they were, how, which ones are going to be going to the state government for, from our advocates for some of the things that we lobby for as WASB.
Mark, I understand that somebody who was not a delegate actually got up and spoke. How was that handled?
I don't recall that one. I, I didn't, I didn't hear anybody get taken out from that. So.
Okay, they just let them speak. All right. It is for delegates who are chosen from each school district.
Sure. Yes, one representative from each school board.
Right. And this is, this is something that was reported at one of my meetings that they actually got up and spoke. And I was just wondering how they actually handled letting this person speak and then also telling him that he couldn't speak. So.
I honestly don't remember that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on. There's a thank you note in your packet on page 26 from the Sabarit family. And then on page 27, and this was mentioned in our finance meeting, we did receive an influx of payments from outlying townships for, from the tax levies. And those are listed on page 27 in your packet. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the regular consent agenda. If there's any items in the consent agenda that you want to address separately, say so now. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve them as presented. Are there additions?
Two things I can add for 6.3.5, the others, there's a recommendation for Matt Church, Brooke Mahoney, and Haley.
And also 6.1.3, the attendance of the Building Safety Committee meeting. I wasn't there, but my name is on there.
So you need a correction for 6.1.3 Building Safety Committee.
Strike my name from.
Strike Bob's name from that. Then we have two additional items. They have a resignation from the dance coach, Ingle. And we have one from Brooke Mahoney as well. So those are additional to the consent agenda. You have copies of those in front of you. Anything else you need to address on there? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to approve the agenda.
I so moved that we approved the consent agenda.
With corrections.
With corrections.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to regular discussion action items, starting with 7.1 on your packet and page 65 through 66, review and possibly approve for early graduation requests. If you have questions, you can ask Mike Clefford. And there's information in your closed second packet, some more details about the student.
Letter of recommendation from Ms. Swanson. So I guess I'll motion to approve the early graduation.
I second.
Motion second to approve early, early graduation. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to item 7.2, review and possibly approve the CISA five service contract for 22-23. That's on page 67 through 69 in your packet. Mike and Becky, do you have any changes from?
It is, it is up from last year. But you gotta remember, a lot of it's prorated, and it's estimate what they think the units, they think we're going to use. If we have fewer kids, less participation, that number goes down. So it's based on the actual minutes that they service.
Okay, so it could be less.
The ones that are high.
Could be less than this, then?
Yes.
Any different services than?
Same, same services as last year.
Any other questions on that item?
Becky, Becky has what the item, the line but line items are. So total increase over last year would be 26,154. The largest increase would be 22,000. The largest increase would be twenty-two thousand. Definitely hard of hearing teacher. Ninety-one hundred for occupational therapy. Forty-seven hundred additional for forty, uh, physical therapy. And then alternate program with a pack is another sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, we don't have a choice.
We had to provide services, so.
Motion to approve the CISA five contract.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion and second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is through CISA ten, and that's a contract, and that's basically. Distance learning, yep. See on page seventy-two, you can see the charge for that. CWETN Network on the bottom of that, under educational technology.
Fourteen four fifty.
Yep.
I want to say it's up about five hundred dollars or so.
It's small, okay.
That's about, yeah.
Now it's pretty consistent.
Motion to approve the CISA ten contract for distance learning.
A second?
I second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is, is Kelly hearing us?
Kelly, can you still hear us? Okay.
Okay.
Hear Mark at least.
Yeah, she can hear me. Yeah, if you can, if.
Yeah, look, I can hear them too.
Okay.
I just didn't see her.
I can.
I didn't see her mouth.
I can hear everybody.
Okay, excellent. Okay, and then we're going to go on to, and Robert probably can give us, shed a little light on this for us. Seven point four, review and possibly approve purchase of middle school lockers. These are the oldest lockers in the building we're talking about.
They're owned by the face room, high school IMC and face room in that hallway, the light blue ones. Um, they've, we spent a lot of time working on them. Um, but there is a change though to the cost. Office outfitters sent me a new quote where their price increased from six, six thousand nine hundred and eleven to six thousand nine hundred and fifty. I'm talking with Ms. Phelan at the middle school. Come to the conclusion that we're only looking to replace twenty-five of the lockers. And then moving some of the better lockers that are down beyond the art room, which we don't have a lot of good view on with security cameras, moving those back up towards the IMC. So if you shift the lockers down, we're only looking at bringing in twenty-five new lockers, which we already have the bases set up.
So you have to work on them. What do you mean? The locks or the hinges or?
It's everything from the locks to the hinges to the doors to the locking mechanisms, the rods that run inside the doors. They've been beat up. Taking a lot of time to do the work on them. Plus, they, they aren't like the high school lockers that are out here, the same brand. So we're actually holding other parts on hand to replace those lockers. You've got to figure out exactly what pieces you need and how you need to go to the locker and change them up.
So you're going to have extra parts now when you take the twenty-five out, right?
What's that?
You're going to have extra parts now for remaining ones.
For what's left of the older style lockers, yes, we'll have some more.
Okay, I don't know if you caught that, Kelly, but it, it's pretty detailed in the packet. Any other questions on that?
I did, but I do have, I do have a question or concern. So you're saying that these are the oldest lockers in the building. What about the men's locker room lockers?
Yeah, and we've.
That, that was my, my interpretation, not Robert's.
Yeah, those are nineteen ninety-three as well. Um, and they are substantially in disrepair. But they also, to be, just to be honest and upfront with everybody here, that men's locker room and the, and the girls or boys and girls locker rooms in the high school are not even close to being adequate for the student body that we have. They're, they're small, they're not a, you know, you, you, a football player can't put their gear in it, right? A lot of, we don't have enough space for even all the FIED students in high school to put their gears in a locker. So they have to rotate out, they have to take their stuff out. And as far as I know, hopefully that's what they're doing. I don't know, I'm not a FIED teacher. But it's inadequate space for our high school students. And that's why some of these things that we look at for the future is important. We need to look at that, you know? Right now, we're looking at STEMs, you know, that whole portion for referendum, but this is something that we need to look at too. And we've looked at this in the past about pulling them out and how to get the most bang for our dollar. And it's not the setup that we currently have.
Don't have the space.
Yeah, and it's all because of lack of space.
Okay, so your recommendation with the, with these lockers, those to go, keep the same brand, Republic?
Yeah, with Marshville up in station.
Marshville is slightly higher.
Yes.
Sixty-nine fifty. So they're even closer.
So it's a hundred twenty-five dollars.
And along with everything else, long lead times, we're looking at August before they get here. And we will not touch those lockers until we know they're here. We don't want to put anybody out and not have a locker for them.
Is there any other vendors for that brand, or is that kind of territorial?
It's territorial. And there's not that many, people often sell lockers. I ran into one additional one at the Washable Conference, but I never purchased together. I'd be introducing a different brand with different mechanisms as well.
Would you like to make the motion then?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. A motion to approve the purchase of the middle school lockers for seven thousand seventy-five dollars.
Would you like to make a second, Kelly? Would you like to make a second?
No, because I want the gym lockers to be addressed.
I'll, I'll make a second then.
Say, do we need to do a roll call vote then?
Well, I would no, because I, I think that those, like you said, they're either just as bad.
We'll make sure to wait the, the minutes reflect that.
I would like to be a no, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two ayes, three ayes and one no. Okay, we'll move on to seven point five, review and possibly adopt revised Neola School Board Policy seventy-four fifty, property inventory.
That's what he was talking about, the audit, that's the change.
And then are we going to do that five thousand? That's the, you already have a, that's the pin in there.
That is the recommendation.
Okay, so that's really the only change we're making?
Yeah, that's the only change.
So make the motion, say that reflect the change, two thousand, five thousand. Would like to make that motion? On page seventy, seventy-eight. Okay. Diana makes the motion.
That's one referring to supplies for inventory.
Yes.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, seven point six, review and possibly accept donation of five hundred dollars from Baysec Machines Incorporated for the purchase of books in memory of Mary Jensen.
Motion to accept the donation and request the administration to send a thank, letter of thank you.
Second?
I second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would take care of that thing.
Okay. We can, yeah, put that in the minutes, Sherry will say. Uh, review and possibly accept the donation of ten thousand dollars from David and Lisa Waldock. Of that ten thousand, they're earmarking six thousand for the music department to be used for choir shell and piano tuning, piano tune. I think that was already reflected in the budget, in our bills this month. Three thousand for the Spanish department to be used to purchase new Spanish books. And one thousand for the art department toward art supplies. Are we going to direct those departments to?
Yeah.
They've already done that because I, they've already purchased, yep. And thank you again to the Waldocks for that.
Motion to accept the donation.
Second?
I second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, review, this is our first read. This is just to review it because we were in communication with the staff and they need a little more time to look at that. Uh, review the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, page eighty-one, eighty-two in your packet. Mike, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can just talk about the, the difference between this proposal and what we have currently for this, this school year. So the one thing that we, we did do in this calendar is we did add one extra day for staff for in-service, and that would be in August. So the total days would go from one eighty-four to one eighty-five. The other big change is that we did eliminate the two snow makeup days. And if we do have a snow day, it's going to be a virtual day for the students. Or elementary could be packets versus the, the virtual learning, which we can now legally do and count that as our days. That would get us out two days earlier in, in June. And the thing that I have struggled with since I've been here is, and this here's a good example. So we have not had a snow day. So we just took a day off last week and.
Today.
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 Today, yeah. Today, today was a snow makeup day, so we, we did not meet today with students or staff, didn't count for one of the days. What if we have two or three more snow days, which is very possible, before we get out of school? And now we're making them up in June and we took the day off. So we, if we're going to put snow makeup days in, they should be the last two days of school. And then if you don't use them, you get out two days earlier. So that, that was kind of our rationale. It's nice to get out two days earlier and just have the days, you know, virtual days. Those are the, those are the biggest changes.
I've heard that from several people, right?
Jerry, actually, any other changes?
No, that in-service date was desperately needed before school started.
Especially with the new reading curriculum.
I, I do have a question, and that is sometimes the charter school and this school, they're, they're different. They have off, they don't. It, it, that gets very confusing as a family member.
It does. And I really support that. I think the charter school, they're their own. I know you're the instrumentality, you're the official governing, but they have a governing board too. And I think we need to, that needs to be their run school with their policies and their calendar. And that's the beauty of having a charter school or a different school, you don't have to follow the exact same schedule. But it, it is confusing at times. It's confusing when we put notices out that go out to all families because we're, we're trying harder to make sure we, you know, we may have to put two messages out and we don't include. Sometimes we do all district message, we don't include the charter school. Or they do a message, they don't include us because it doesn't pertain, you know, to the other, one or the other, so.
It's confusing when you have to.
And they're in trimesters versus quarters. So there's another, you know, something unique, something different, which is good.
And then also the notification when the bus isn't going around. That causes a lot of travel by the parents to go out and pick up that child or drop them off.
The buses, can I talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
The buses do, like every single time that we have a difference, every single parent is contacted by phone. And there is an opportunity for them to have their child picked up in the ambulance drop. That, that is an option. And every single parent is called every single time, Laura calls every single one.
Thank you, Beth.
Thanks. We were really hard on that, so.
Uh, one more, one more thing on the snow days. You said we're out of snow days now?
No, we have one, one left.
Okay, in the event we exceed that? Has there been any talk about doing a virtual replacement for that this year?
Yes.
Rather than add on to the end of it? Okay, so we have something on, on, on deck for that? Okay.
We did, so we don't need to use it.
Okay. All right, well then we'll move on to the.
So we need a tentative approval?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's just our first read.
Yeah, and then next month it'll be on for approval.
All right, so seven point nine, we have two overnight field trips here, extended field trips. First one is for students' families, trip to Fort McCoy for tree planting, camping at Black River State Forest. Anybody want to add anything to this? I mean, Beth is there. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's no cost to the district. It's a great event.
Is this a new event, Beth?
It is. It's, um, we're, it's with our virtual school, so we've never done an overnight with the virtual school, but all of the kids will have parents there as well, so.
Actual overnight, not a virtual overnight?
Yeah, it's an actual overnight, a virtual weekend.
Virtual one would require a cyber currency expense.
Virtual.
Crypto currency.
I don't have a cyber general policy, yeah.
I so move that we approve this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the virtual school to really be part of, of an activity.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The second trip on there, this is for the charter school, not virtual. And this is, is this a new trip as well?
It is. You had approved the eighth grade Boston trip. And the eighth grade Boston trip kind of fell apart. So they have revamped and they're going to Custer State Park in Mount Rushmore. So they've been fundraising for this for a long time. There's zero cost. Lots of great schedules. It should be a great trip. It's very traditional in Waldorf that in eighth grade you do that larger trip. These guys have been doing overnight trips. This Ms. Ellis Pass has been doing overnight trips, I think, since third grade.
It says it's also tied into their history unit as well, so. Any other questions?
I so move that we approve this trip.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Robert's going to help us, you know, he talked about discussing the high school gym floor logo.
I was hoping that you would help me. So we, we did have.
Has there been any renditions, Robert?
All those, if anybody remembers that. This is the one that Sean had come up with and created.
It'd be backwards, the letters would be backwards on the screen.
The logo was stained. Um, the logo was, the logo and the, the core is stained. The board had questions on.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we're at the convention, I mean, getting more and more creative with gym floors all the time. Some of them are having completely colored three-point circles. Staining is a little bit muted, but in between definitely adds, I think, some, you know, aesthetically it looks nice. Um, I think, I, for us, well, two things, I guess. One question I had with staining, does that throw off like volleyball players when they're on the court versus just having the lines? Or is, do they, are they different? Have they played on those kinds of courts? Or they have a different color? Thing that overlap?
I would think so. If they've been, if they've played on a few courts, I can't be sure.
Is that a positive, negative, or indifferent, or?
I have not talked to the volleyball coach, but I'm assuming they have played because more and more schools are going to staining versus the solid color.
Exactly, okay. So I guess that'd be one thing to check, I guess, before we pull the trigger on the staining for, from my perspective. Um, and then the other piece, I guess, that we're, would be, do you go with a stained logo or a blue logo? Color, traditional logo? Where we need to.
Wasn't Steve saying you talked to him?
To us?
I have a phone call though, he hasn't called me back, but.
I mean, the trend, I think, is more towards a stained logo.
Does this decision have to be made like right now, or should we wait till we get?
We probably have a little bit of time, but.
We do have a little bit of time.
Probably by the next meeting.
Okay.
Of course, create his, his stencil one, get that ready for.
Kind of partial to the traditional blue logo myself, but.
Which would look good with the, with the end, you know, the sidelines, end zones and.
Yeah, yeah, and that'll be a big change with the other color, the blue.
I don't know if you could see that in the, that logo is in the center there, but it's really difficult to see. There's a falcon in there that's also stained.
It's a white outline, like the details.
Yeah, I would say we would need a decision by next month, just so we can get.
Do they start polling athletic teams, users, or?
We can check with the volleyball team, that was, yeah.
I mean, even on the blue logo, is there a preference? I guess if anybody has comments out there, now's the time to send an email.
I, I do kind of like the blue logo.
That'd be my first choice.
Ever since I've lived here, that's what I, I just do, I, so I guess I'm a traditionalist. But I've seen a lot of videos of, you know, like, tubes and so on with stained end zones, and I do like the look of the end zones.
So David Devil's advocate here. If you did decide to go with the blue logo and later on in life decided to go to an all-stained court, it's easier to transfer that direction than it is to go from a stained logo to a painted logo. Or to a different stained logo.
I prefer it in three years to.
So we're gonna table this until the next year?
I think that's, I mean, I think, tentatively, I think, that's probably the last deciding factor is that logo. Else has any concerns about it?
Kelly, what, you have any concerns or any thoughts on that?
Besides the picture that you showed me, I mean, I don't know, I can't really give a very good deal, but, so.
Let's table it till next month, then, but we, we do need a decision, um, next month, so Steve can get going on that.
So it just says discuss, so we don't have to take action on it at all, just so you know. Okay, we'll go on to review and possibly approve WIAA Girls Hockey Co-op on page eighty-nine, that's a continuation.
Correct, and that is, I believe the winter one is due in April, so that's why.
We have any difference in the number of girls out for that?
No, I think, uh, I think we have one, just one girl, and six boys.
Sounds great.
Just one girl.
Page eighty-nine in your packet.
That co-op has to be approved with a WIAA, but yeah, I think it's April first.
Motion to approve the hockey co-op.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Kelly, would you like to make a second? Okay. We have a second from Kelly. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for next agenda.
Gym floor.
Gym floor, yes.
I have, I have one concern, and that is the, the railings that were put in, um, is now in a, in a student section. And so it, they're no longer railings for when, where the, um, family members sit in the gym. I'm just wondering if we could possibly look at putting some railings there, so people could climb higher.
Talked about that.
It took us a long time to get them put in, and now they're over there with the kids, in the kids' section, and it isn't.
How the sections got changed, right?
Can they transfer, just swap those over to the other side, or is that not really?
No, there's modifications of nature.
No.
Okay. Either you move the sections back where they were, or rebind the handles. Or cheap, but. Is he gonna get a estimate on the cost of getting more P handles, or getting the cost of just moving the sections back to fit the P handles?
Okay, sounds like we're gonna look into that.
Thank you.
All right, well then I need a motion to go on to close.
There's one other thing that we.
Just for Kirk, if he wants to give a report.
Yeah.
Yeah, just under informational.
Old school calendar.
School calendar, yes. Put this on there too, just, if it happens. We've tentatively set a date to meet with staff prior to that meeting, maybe we can give a report on that.
Oh, yeah.
All I can think of. Um, who would like to read the motion to go on to close session?
I will. The Board of Edu, the Board of Education reserves the right to declare a closed question pursuant to state statutes.